Now that our attorney has arrived, we can get started. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the North Metro Training Center. And tonight, we're hosting a joint meeting with the City of Portland. And Madam Mayor, it's really a pleasure and honor to have you with us tonight. I know that we have sat together on other commissions like the Rocky Plutz Stewardship Commission, which was always a joy. Well. She made it a joy. Maybe it was not a pleasant experience for you, but I have the utmost respect for you in managing a really tough campaign. And again, this is our North Metro Board, and we'll probably have some introductions. But first, we'll do the call to order. I think North Metro is only doing the call to order, so.
Yes, sir. All right, President Condo.
Here.
Director Valera.
Here.
Director Law Evans.
Here.
Director Miller.
Here.
Director Hiramasa.
Here.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Well, as you know, I'm also a council member for the City of Portland, so I did want to, on behalf of Portland, welcome you to Section 36. And you may hear me from time to time call it Area 36, but I'm less assured we do not have any UFOs or. At least to my knowledge. So with that, what I'd like to do now is to ask for the approval of the agenda. Again, this is a North Metro. And also, once we do that, then after that, I will walk us through the legislative agents. I'll move through the agenda. Thank you, Director Hiramasa, thank you, Director Miller, first and seconded, for the agenda, those in favor.
Aye.
Any votes? None being motion carries, we have an agenda. Can we all stand now and have a possible word? The pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All righty, thank you, Director. You're really moving through this agenda. That's amazing. So we have a number of presentations, and the first of which I think is to get outside before it gets dark, as well as to burn your meal. So we're going to burn some calories. And for that, I will turn over to Chief Dogg.
Yeah, thank you very much. Welcome on behalf of North Metro and Gordon. Chief Kelly is actually going to walk through what our agenda looks like today. But we'll start with some introductions.
Yeah.
It'll be done, and then we'll go to the next one. Perfect. So we've got a number of topics here. I am Steve Kelly, Fire Chief of the Thornton Fire Department. Like Chief Dogg already said, welcome, everyone. Thanks for being here. We're certainly looking forward to this opportunity to tour this facility and talk about what the future looks like. We're going to go through some introductions. We're going to go out for a tour. We're going to try to take advantage of what is about an hour of daylight left. We're going to come back here for food and a quick break, and then we're going to jump right into a presentation to talk about some history of this training center. How this facility is used by both North Metro and Thornton today. The IGA will also talk about the next steps. Yeah, so we're going to do introductions, and I think it's probably easiest if we just go around the room here. And Dino, I think we'll start with you.
Oh, the blades on it.
I'm Dino Ross, I'm General Counsel for North Metro.
Tammy Yellico, the City Attorney.
TMC Hayward, the City Manager in Thornton.
I'm Justin Martinez, Councilmember, Thornton Board One.
Chair Salazar. Burton City Council, Board One. Roberto Ayala, Ward Two, City Council. Jessica Sandberg, City Council, Ward Two.
Chris Russell, Ward Four, North City Council.
Jan Holman, Mayor of the City of Thornton.
Rich Condo, North Metro Board.
James Hiramasa, North Metro Board.
Dick Miller, North Metro.
Luke Law Evans, Board of North Metro.
Peter Valera, North Metro Fire.
Mark Dogg, Fire Chief for North Metro.
As Steve Kelly, Fire Chief of Thornton.
Gary Hobbs, Deputy Chief, Thornton.
Matt Ryan, Deputy Chief of Support Services, North Metro Fire.
Bernie Anderson, Deputy Chief of Operations for Thornton Fire.
Matt O'Leary, Deputy Chief of Operations for North Metro Fire.
Lisa Wells, Chief Financial Officer, North Metro Fire.
We also have Chief Davro here as well. With Thornton, he's sitting back there, but he'll definitely have a part here in a little while. With that, we will actually move outside to do our tour. So we're going to see up through these doors, walk down the hallway to the end of the hallway, and we'll gather there. And.
Okay, this is Tammy Yellico, the City Attorney for Thornton. And the members of City Council, along with North Metro Fire Rescue District, are going for a tour at this time. So there will be nothing on the screen, but we will return and resume this meeting. Thank you.
I would tell you that the fire trainer reminds me of the movie Backdraft, Ron Harb movie. Not David. But I did, early in my time on Northland Council, bring about four or five council members and I thought to myself, boy, if anybody got their hair sent, you know, I'd never hear the end of that. In any case, we're gonna go ahead and break for food and then after that we'll just eat and go through the rest of the material. So, you know, if you line up and food is... Yes, sir. Oh, are there questions?
Restrooms.
Yes, just outside the store, men's and women's are on the other wall there.
Okay, great, great. Get up and grab it and start off with the Madalarys.
Maybe.
Which map? We have two other maps. We have two Mad Deputy Chiefs, so it's like Mad Square.
Yeah, so thanks for joining us on that tour and seeing some of the capabilities of the training center and the diversity of applications and experience that we can provide here. A little bit of history, the training center opened in 2008 under a bond initiative that North Metro passed. It sits on 14 acres, consists of, you know, this classroom building, all the burn buildings. We saw the confined space, at least the above ground elements of the inspoken debate props, the trench rescue prop and that extrication area, driving trap. We didn't highlight the hazardous materials prop, but as Chief Anderson alluded to, that's an area of strong emphasis for us that poses a lot of hazard to the community. He's gonna talk a little bit about a call that involved our agency's operated on last week that was pretty dramatic. But right behind the car fire prop was a complex array of different piping and valving and domes that you can clamp that you might find on a large interstate, compressed gas transport vehicles or liquid chemical transport vehicles. So it allows our hazmat team or hazmat technicians to practice a lot of those less often because highly technical and specialized skills and application. In addition to that, we talked a little bit about the collapse. In addition to that, we talked a little bit about the collapse prop. And it allows us to focus on the burning, reaching and breaking, so cutting metal, concrete, heavy lifting. And even means of detection for people that might be trapped under some of the destruction elements. In addition to the north area technical rescue team that Chief Hops and I spoke about. A number of our members participate as members of Colorado Task Force One, and that's that urban search and rescue. Team FEMA Department of Homeland Security team that deploys nationally to a large scale disasters, so. A lot of these capabilities help hone their skills as well, and a lot of the skills. That they learn at the on deployments or at these specialized trainings through the Colorado Task Force. They bring back to us and were able to integrate into our team operations, both with our independent agencies and in that north area technical rescue consortium. The classrooms. Here and the tiered classroom on the other side are modular, so each of these enclosures hold collapsible walls, so we can divide the space into three separate. Classrooms, we can divide the A V capabilities into three different presentations at any given time and configure those differently. We can, we have some zoom and streaming capabilities for off site or on. Streaming. And we offer a lot of different classes throughout the year, not only do we offer that North Area Fire Academy that varies in duration, but this last one was nine months. Including a full E M T course at the beginning of the. Fire Academy, but we offer on the Heavy Rescue Academy, a ten day, two week class for those technical rescue disciplines. Two week hazmat technician classes, we offer fire instructor state certification classes, fire officer state certification classes. We offer company officer development, we offer. Safety and medical officer academies, field training officer academies, and even chief level officer development classes, so. It is a constant array of offerings on various professional development assignments around here.
You know, I think I'll, I'll add just a little bit to that, we talked about it. Slightly, but in two thousand and eight, you can imagine infrastructure wise, building this, this facility out here wasn't much out here then from the infrastructure standpoint wastewater water. So the progression of seeing the cities grow, knowing that this is a, a Northland address in the county of Weld. And we're fed by Brewfield Water, we've been working diligently over the years to get to a point where we could go off of a septic system and onto a wastewater system. So at the end of this year, we really hope to see a, the development of a one mile pipe that will run to Northland wastewater to, to. To truly support how large the facility is and how many people are using it on an everyday basis. It'll, it'll allow us to start using our bathrooms more frequently, we do have showers, they're used in frequently, that will support that, we'll talk a little bit more towards the end about. Our vision for where that can go in the future and how we still need to grow that. But the facility built in two thousand and eight really was quite the facility for North Metro Fire. And now seeing it with both of us combined forward in North Metro, we see this, this great opportunity for what, what this building can do now and where we see it going into the future. But definitely, it's been a bit of a unique challenge just where it is. But also it's been, we've enjoyed those things because of the distance home from residences and some of the other challenges to make the long that.
Yeah, you guys got to experience some of the fire props at the loading dock and on the rollover hallway and then the car firing props. And as we talked about, those are all, what Chief Rose described as Class B props, so those are propane fired props. As opposed to Class A props that are combustible materials like typically hay and wood or live fire evolutions, so. While they're able to set them quickly and give us lots of repetitions and really emphasize some of the really necessary skill sets like. Water application, hose streams, hose deployment and movement. They are dependent on propane and they are dependent on some really sophisticated technical systems to operate those props. The temperature sensors that Chief Brocher talked about, the G P M sensors, temperature centers, sensors and all the safety systems, which we really appreciate. But they are complex and they can experience errors, so. That's one of the drawbacks of those, the other is that they are unable to replicate realistic smoke conditions. And while you felt some of the heat from those props when they were fired up, they really failed to replicate. Real enclosed structural fire heat intensity. So pros and cons of all of those. First, I've gone to.
A Class A fire for those people that don't know their classes.
Yeah, that's the combustible materials typically pallets, hay, scrap wood, it's dirty, it's smoky, it's hot. And it replicates some of those fire conditions more readily, but again, when we apply water to it and soak all that stuff. It takes a while to reset, so it's hard for us to, to run evolutions back to back, especially when we have very big academies like the one that we just included in.
So if you don't have a Class A demonstrator here, where, where are people getting their class of training today?
Yeah, typically we use Adams County's facility down there off of about sixty ninth in Washington. Yeah, seventy six Washington, it is collaborative and it is cooperative with those guys. So we do get some of that last day exposure and we'll trade capabilities and facilities and they'll provide us with some of their. Live fire operators will provide them with our prop operators here and do some, some exchange to enjoy the benefits of both of those. Type of facilities.
Any questions about that? Chief Brown and Bars.
All right, so Chief Hops and I are going to kind of present the next three slides here, and before I get into the automatic aid responses that you see on the screen. I'm going to briefly describe how we currently dispatch today, we dispatch in a CAD to CAD system under most. I'm sure the majority of people in this room have heard what CAD to CAD is, but I'll explain the difference between CAD to CAD. And what is known as A D L, A D L is Automatic Vehicle Location, that's pretty common across the nation to be able to see. Your neighbor's units, location and where they're at, or obviously your own units as well. The issue with A D L is, it, it doesn't talk between CAD centers, so if North Metro had an incident. And recognize that a Thornton unit was closest. They would have to physically dispatchers would have to, most of the time physically pick up a phone and call Thornton Dispatch and say. This engine said you two available, yes or no, and then they go through a toney process within Thornton's dispatch to actually tone that unit. You can imagine the time delays in that process in an A D L system. CAD to CAD, on the other hand, is somewhat rare, it's a long process to be able to build a CAD to CAD project for multiple CAD agencies or dispatch centers to be able to speak jointly together. And view units in the real time, our CAD to CAD is jointly done with Adcom, Brewfield, Thornton, Westminster Dispatching Agencies. Within that CAD to CAD system is six different fire agencies, it's Adams County, Brighton, North Metro, Thornton Fire, South Adams County and Westminster. So CAD system directly shares incidents and unit status across all of those agencies, so in that hypothetical incident. Not only would they see that the Thornton unit is closest, but they also know that that unit is actually available and that when they tone or alert that unit. They receive it in real time with near. You know, no delay whatsoever, so it dispatches as, as if it were North Metro's doing it within our system. So CAD to CAD responds to true system level interoperability, allowing agencies to act almost as one dispatch network between those four dispatching agencies. So now moving to the automatic aid response, there's a lot of information in that chart, kind of focus on the green and the blue. Rows, the, the green represents a total incidence that Thornton has given to North Metro in that second column. And then what North Metro has given to Thornton, so incident counts can be a little bit deceiving, when, when somebody calls nine one one, they receive one incident number with one count. So think of that as a one tally in the incident column. The blue down below is the apparatus responses that actually go to those incidents, so an example of a, a medical incident could receive an engine and a medic unit. And then if you go to the extreme of a, of a structured fire, for example, receives four engines, three trucks. Two battalion chiefs, two medic units, a SAM, a lot of units, right, with ten units that are going to that incident, that's why the total apparatus response count is higher. So previously prior to CAD to CAD, Thornton, for example, if they had a structure fire, they would receive the units in that area that are from Thornton. Or if they go through that slower process that I recommended, that I, I spoke about earlier about picking up the phone and calling the dispatch agency to see if there's available units. But Thornton units could be coming from extreme far ends of the district, which obviously makes a longer response time to be able to get to that, that structure butter. Now, in CAD to CAD, it picks the ten closest units between all of those agencies that I previously mentioned, it's the ten closest and puts them on scene very quickly.
Like that for this slide. Yeah, I think I'll, I'll have one, one thing before we move on, I, I mean, highlight on the right, the location of the training center compared to the both, both jurisdictions. And really, when we talk about location for both the city of Ford and for North Metro, the training center is, is. Very centrally located between the two organizations and locations that we're both able to access and train with together. While keeping our resources in relative proximity to our response areas. And it makes this a, I mean, it really makes this a great location for a fire training center.
I think it also, just these numbers highlight the, the frequency at which we're working together and why this training center is such a benefit to. Not only us from a safety standpoint, personnel standpoint, but to the community, I mean, if we're running this many calls into North Metro's going into Forden that many times. And we're working with a North Metro engine and a Forden medic unit, being able to train together on a daily basis. We have seen just such a, a great benefit from our, our co housing for this facility, really do on a daily basis. So this next slide is North Metro's district and this is where we're receiving the help from Thornton. So on the north side of that, our district, that's kind of the, the highway seven corridor, an area that's busier for us is the Palisade Park on the west side of I twenty five. Also kind of where the, the Northwest Parkway meets E four seventy and that I twenty five interchange. Out east and southeast, that's an area of holy crossing for us, that's unincorporated Adams County, that's part of North Metro's district as well. And then that big glowing spot in the center that of course is Northland, that's very high density for us, the, the population density is generally what leads to incidents, right? So the, the glowing spot on the north side of Northland, that's going to be I hundred, a hundred and twentieth Avenue corridor. And then the southwest side is, is south of a hundred and the fourth, west of I twenty five, and really that's because Thornton seventy two, this is very close into that area in relation to where. Station six two is.
All right, I'll be kind of going through the heat map in relation to North Metro responses into Thornton. Let me kind of start by sharing what creates those heat signatures. There's real, really three factors, first is station location, so when fire stations are positioned near jurisdictional boundaries. It's naturally going to increase that cross border response. Second is multi unit incidents, so events like structured fires and traffic accidents, they often require. Multiple apparatus drawing support from, from multiple agencies. And then third are, are those high density response or areas, response areas that like Chief Aran had mentioned, when primary units are tied up on active calls. Nearby apparatus from other jurisdictions that been to maintain coverage and continuity of service. So if we look at the, the southern portion of the map. Specifically that. Northland Thornton border, while the proximity of the stations plays a small role, the, the dominant factor there is clearly call volume. So these neighborhoods generate a high frequency of emergencies and we see a consistent automatic aid response between. Agencies in order to meet those demands. And then up along the northern region, along I twenty five, E four seventy, I was seven, and kind of that greater Lark Ridge area. The pattern shifts slightly. The resource sharing is driven both by proximity of stations like sixty six. But also the nature of the incidents, there's a lot of incidents, fires, weed fires, traffic accidents that require multiple unit responses. That are drawing multiple jurisdictions in that area. So, so what does this tell us? I think most importantly, it tells us our partnerships working. We're deploying the right resources to the right incidents regardless of jurisdictional lines. And it means our firefighters, Thornton and North Metro alike are operating as one team. Every single day. This makes the, the integration of operations and training essential. And be able to maintain that, if not bolster it, is, is imperative to our future. Are there, are there any questions? I mean, obviously there are. Well, first of all, thank you. Really appreciate that, seems like there's a lot of, those must be very hot. But are there any questions though? Please stop us at any point. Absolutely, okay, bye.
And I'll, and I'll say, I think what it, what it highlights is, is that every day you are seeing. Crossing between Thornton, North Metro, not just separately but together. Every day, over twenty times per day, which is a significant percentage of our daily call point. And we rely on that to maintain our response times, and so without this resource sharing. We would not, we would see our response times dropping, or increasing significantly outside of our expected, our expected standards. And so it is this is leveraging these relationships and these resources that allows us to do just that. And so the public benefits every day from these, these co responses.
My question, on that sheet where you had mentioned the kinds of calls that North Metro comes into Thornton. Were, do you have a breakdown, particularly thinking of the I twenty five crash corridor and just the number of resources? We know it's a drain on our fire department, but I'm also curious if North Metro responds to those.
I don't speak for North Metro, but every, every day we are on I twenty five. The corridor from really south of eighty fourth avenue and then just north of Denver. All the way up to highway seven is a significant impact on daily responses, our crews, North, North Metro and Thornton are on the highway every single day. Our minimum response to an incident on the highway is two engines and a medic unit. And, and for highway responses, one of our, our key concerns and our key responsibilities is making sure we're protecting those crews operating. Not just fire crews, but also our, our public safety police partners, towing companies and other individuals on the highway. So we, we will, we expend more resources on the highway to protect our people as well. And so, so yes, it is a significant draw of resources.
I guess I just wonder about C dot and their. Responsibility to any of that?
Yeah.
If there is any responsibility or just, do they ever engage with either department and offer resources or reimbursement?
Yeah, I, I serve on the, the traffic incident management team with, with the C dot. They do have some responsibility to it, they're in a similar type of situation across the state of underfunded, understaffed. And it's very difficult to get into, into position effectively. With the resources that they do have available, we, we've seen what happens when something happens on I twenty five. It, it becomes a parking lot, them trying to get in to assist is, is very difficult. They do try to do their best, they do keep those. Those safety vehicles available up in the north area. It does just so happen that they are putting five more of those apparatus. In service within the Denver metro area. So that's going to help some, and I would say that that probably adds one, maybe two to that side of it. Very good for I twenty five. We have to remember that the E four seventy and Northwest Parkway is not part of the C dot system. That is an area of response wise that really concerns me because it, the speeds are so much higher out there on that road and it, it is a big concern. And I, I, we don't have a good answer for how that's handled. But for the I twenty five portion of it, C dot is aware, we discuss this every quarter when we have a meeting. The, the other jurisdictions that have apparatus that get hit, even the C dot personnel to get hit out on the road, highway patrol to get hit out on the road. So yeah, everybody is well aware of it, we just don't have a real good solution for it yet. South Adams Fire does have a response truck that they try to put in service when they can, it's got that, it's called a scorpion, that, that buffer. But then again, it's having it in the right place at the exact right time is, is very difficult, fire apparatus is appropriately placed for fast response. And that's why we do what we do to that. That's kind of where the I twenty five is situated.
I would just think that your data would be the most beneficial data. I would just think that your data would be the most beneficial data, one of the most beneficial pieces of data. When there's meetings like Dr. Cog and E four seventy board meetings talking about. Road expansion, road improvements, and I don't think I've actually ever seen anyone from the fire department there, so it's. I'm sure that there is somebody that has that communication going, but it seems like. You could, you would be one of the people at the table having that conversation. Uh, because it's a drain on all of our resources in every city.
Sure. And it's not just a drain on resources. There's a, there's a very legitimate risk factor associated with it. Uh, it, it's very concerning to me that it's just. It's a matter of time before some fatality occurs with this. Um, we've been very fortunate in the. The accidents over the past couple of years of a fire apparatus getting hit, um, have not resulted in fatalities. Um, South Adams had a very close to fatal. Ours have been, we've been pretty fortunate on our side. I'll come to it. It's a very scary area.
On the, on the I twenty five corridor, especially this fresh from eighty fourth Avenue up to a hundred and twentieth and farther north, it is. Almost always Thornton and North Metro who are on the highway responding. And I think one of the values is that both of us get used there very quickly. From seventy twos and sixty twos, um, we're putting resources on the highway rapidly. Doesn't preclude us from getting hit. That's always one of our concerns. We are protecting our people in the essence. No, that's our, that is our number one priority.
I will say that our residents and those who come from out of the area, um, have always been very appreciative of the quick response. Um, because we hear from the youth. So thank you for getting out there and risking your life on I twenty five and people here in situations.
I think the, uh, the training center really tight, like coming back to the training center, our, our ability to work together every day and work on extrication out. On the, the cars, including that B C part, they get sawed there with our logo on it. That function really allows us to be quicker, more efficient, even when we're on the highway and we try to get off the highway. There's, there is an injury truly from eighty fourth all the way to Fury Parkway. If there is a, if there's a crash, it's highly likely we are both there. And if we weren't as coordinated as we are, um, our, our apparatus blocking would be worse. Would be in a, a more risky circumstance just because we didn't know each other as well. So the. The day to day here and working together and doing a fire academy together truly, even on the highway benefits the safety of our folks. And speaking of incidents, we're gonna go through a couple of, uh, auto aid incidents that we brought.
Yes, these, these first few, um, this is not an exhaustive list by any means. Highlight some of these low frequency, uh, the high risk incidents. That we talked about on the drill ground that we trained for in lieu of. Was, you know, the, the frequency of response. Um, this first incident at eighty fourth Avenue and I twenty five in Thornton's district was, um. Classified as con space rescue and it was initiated by someone hearing cries for help from a, um. From inside a sewer. Initial response was upgraded to, um, some of the technical rescue unit response to include, um. Engine six six, which is a rescue pumper collapse six six, which has confined space. Operational capabilities Westminster's rescue two that supports those, um, confined space capabilities. Uh, rescue seventy five out of Thornton, their safety medical officer battalion chiefs. Uh, really robust response for this, um, this highly technical incident. In that, um. This instance, crews, um, did the, the full, um. Complement of personal protective equipment, which is supplied air lines that allow them, you know, to not operate off a bottle. With very limited, um, reach by virtue of time. But on, um, three hundred foot supplied airline so they can operate for an extended period of time to. To perform reconnaissance in the sewer, in which case they did contact a party who had been, you know, seeking refuge in there and then had a medical. Emergency, um, air monitoring was performed and, um. I don't think it was determined that there was any noxious or, um. You know, environment that lacked oxygen. It turned out to be a, a medical complaint, as I recall. And that party was, was removed through a, a pretty simple, um. Rope retrieval system and stretcher and transported to a hospital. But, um, these confined space incidents in particular. Where we talked about ten units, um, responding on a structured fire, we can very quickly exceed. That number of units on a technical rescue incident and the number of personnel can be well into the twenties.
Just real quick, if you're not familiar with it, the seventy series numbers are the Thornton units. The sixty series are the North Metro units. That's how we distinguish between our various agencies.
Yeah, the second incident there, um, very similar in nature, um, that's the time I was a battalion chief and responded on this one. Again, you can see the number of units and personnel that it requires. Uh, reporting party said that they had seen a, an arm waving out of a sewer grate up in the Lark Ridge area, not too far from here. Um, so while as this incident progressed, our index of suspicion decreased overall, we had to do our due diligence and exercise. Um, the full system, which again, involved a, a number of specialized units. Entry teams, backup teams, air monitoring from the hazmat team. Um, rope retrieval and high point anchor systems from, um, our rope rescue specialists, strong command. Elements with not only our battalion chiefs from Thornton and North Metro, but a strong unified. Command presence from the Thornton Police Department who's supplied us with a lot of, um, really good intel and maps of that, um, that sewer system. It became apparent that it was known then that there wasn't access in that Lark Ridge area. That wasn't uncommon for kids to go under there and there was a lot of graffiti and kind of a, uh, a little hangout spot for them to suspect. That's what that was, but we, um, we took it really seriously and went on the full distance on those three hundred foot lines. Before feeling really secure that there was no patient in that instance. But instance of that, that technical nature. Uh, really highlight the need for that strong sense of interoperability and these strong systems of dispatch. And response to come to a, a successful conclusion that, that both of the decisions did. Um, these next fire incidents, I have some familiarity with the, um. Both of these were in the city of Northland. Both of these were multi-family apartment buildings. Um, one one three hundred block is Highland Way Apartments. This was a particularly tricky fire in, um, as indicated there in a crawl space under a boiler in this three-story apartment building. It was really hard to access. What we had was, uh, again, a strong mutual aid response from North Metro units, strong representation by Thornton units. Command elements in those battalion chief roles from both agencies. We also incorporated. Bed Heights, which is engine forty one and then, um, truck six and medic six from Westminster. So you can see how this, the cat to cat and A D L system, the chief brand described. Combined to bring all of these, um, units to bear on these complicated problems. How important it is to be operated under common terminology, under common command systems and under common. Um, the standard operating procedures as these incidents escalate. That next, um, unit, uh, or the, uh, incident at, uh, seven hundred east one oh fifth, um. What's the name of those apartments, H? One oh fifth square, Huntington Square. Thank you. Yeah, Huntington Square Apartments there. So this was a, um. Apartment fire and a four-story fire, uh, four-story building. So obviously, I do, high level of. Light safety, um, high level of impact on these occupancies. It could easily harm people or displace a whole lot of people. So we. Um, put a whole lot of, um, resources at these incidents. If we recognize an active incident in a multi-family. Occupancy like this, that first alarm, which is four engines, a truck, the two battalion chiefs, two medic units, Sam is almost immediately upgraded. To, uh, second alarm with another complement of almost that same amount of minutes. So the degree of coordination, degree of supervision and the degree of skill and knowledge becomes even more important. Those type of incidents. It's still examples of, of that, um, ability to respond and operate effectively.
Uh, these are a couple of fires that Thornton had a pretty good, uh, influence on. We had a grass fire up in a hundred and twenty-third, uh, the east side of that Thornton area. Um, again, unincorporated Adams County, which ends up being North Metro's area, but they don't have any stations over there. We have the closer ones. Um, brush trucks, um, that over there, uh, again, the command, the coordination between the various agencies. Uh, but a pretty, pretty good stop on that pretty quick. If I remember right, this was right after the Marshall fire. If I remember right, it was, uh. Right on everybody's mind about what Marshall fire ended up doing and the winds blowing this day and that looks, uh, definitely something we want to get stopped quick. Um, the other one, it was dog ice rescue, um. Dogs going through the ice are a pretty common thing in the winter time. Uh, they, they'll chase the geese and stuff out there and if, uh, the dog goes out, then people usually go right out after them. And so that's always the concern, uh, while that's a, a Thornton area unincorporated. Um, it was all Thornton units that took care of that one. The dog got himself out before we got there though, so. It was, uh, a good response. Uh, we, uh, had the dive team going and heading in that direction, so we did on that part of it. Uh, one that's not on here, we talked about it real quick, it was that hazmat incident the other morning last week. Uh, with the hat, the, um, hydrochloric acid. Um, again, um, heavy influence of Thornton and Northern Metro, the training that goes on with that one. Um, while it was a map super traffic in the morning, all in all, it was very successful operation. And, uh, good coordination between the agencies on that, so.
Thank you, gentlemen. Um, the, the next portion of this is really just talking about how, how did we get here today? How do we end up in a building where we're co-staffed? Um, obviously, as, as the north area developed, we started working together more. We saw more commonality in our fire academies with North Metro and Thornton trainees in the same academy. But in twenty sixteen, um, we came to an agreement through an I G A. For shared use of this training center by Thornton staff. So as we walk through the offices, um, they're, they're split up. There's a, an office for Chief Rozier, there's a shared office for our two training lieutenants. Um, Captain Kali Larson from Thornton has the office right across the way. I mean, it also just allowed for the use of the, the facility. Um, that was a success, a successful year from twenty sixteen to twenty seventeen. And we amended that contract for an additional four years, um, well, five years essentially ending in twenty twenty five. Uh, if my math is all right there, four years plus one additional year. With escalating cost for the rental agreement that we essentially had, there was an amount of money paid by Thornton. To North Metro each year with an escalation or similar to a, 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 uh, index cost increase. Um, year to year, and we have seen a great deal of benefit from that. Uh, just where we were with having Thornton in the facility, training on a frequent basis to actually being housed together. And having a vision of what, what that could be, where could that go? Um, what do our training divisions do together? Is there any synergy there? Is there any, um, e- economy of scale? And, um, from there, I'll actually turn it over to Chief Rozier and maybe Matt as well to speak about. What's developed since the I G A was put in place.
Well, who doesn't like gifts? Let's start with gifts. Uh, Chief O'Leary wanted to charge you. I found that to be wildly inappropriate. If you see there's a, a coin, uh, should be a coin in front of you. Uh, that has an N on it. That represents, uh, Northside Training Consortium. So a little gift for you, um. Kind of represents our team. I'm one fifth of the training team. It consists of two training chiefs, it consists of two training captains. Um, and two training lieutenants, but most importantly and probably the, the most important person. Is the other fifth is, is Debbie, if you haven't met her. She is, uh, really represents the administrative part of, of these two training divisions coming together. Kind of give you a history of how this all started. Some of you, I would hope, most of you are all familiar with Chief Gordy Olson. Chief Gordy Olson was the training, uh, the fire chief at Thornton, uh, prior to Chief Kelly. He came from, uh, Washington and, uh, and came from an area of King County. And King County has a, a training consortium, a large training consortium of South King County. It consists of around fifteen departments, um, that have come together. And they have created this consortium, which is essentially utilizing, you know, content, expertise, costs. Um, resources to, to provide training for this area and it is a massive area. And in the, and when Chief Gordy came here, he built a very great relationship with Chief Ramos. Which we should all know as well, another respected man in this area. And through that relationship, they decided to take a, a group of us to, to the Washington area. And we spent about four or five days, where are you? It was an amazing trip because we saw, because our perspective was limited, our vision was limited. We saw this massive training consortium and this massive training building that was actually an old, uh, Boeing corporate center. In which they conducted this incredible amount of training with all these departments being cooperative. And showed us a different kind of way of training. And as we've kind of talked earlier with us kind of running calls down together more than ever. Crews are, are literally grabbing the same hose line. Crews from different departments are literally grabbing the same hose line and going into a burning building. And we saw that there's a better way to do this. And so through those two gentlemen. We agreed to kind of build what's called Northside Training. And that's why I kind of wear a different uniform than anybody else. I am the training, uh, chief for the Thornton Fire Department. But most importantly, I am one fifth of this team called Northside Training, which is this consortium style training. And what we do is we bring essentially these two departments, which are now consisting of around sixteen stations. And we bring them together and we train them together and we intentionally mix them on these trainings. So we will mix an engine company from one department with a medic unit from another, and, and, and all different types of ways. To get them ready and prepared to actually go do the very thing that they'll do at any moment. And it has been tremendously successful. And I think it's also created just a very awesome synergistic cooperative energy within the north area. And so, you know, as you tell, I'm a little bit passionate about, I was one of the founding members of it. I believe in it wholeheartedly. I think it's somewhere we should continue to go in the north area. We're gonna just see more and more success as we, uh, have that type of cooperative spirit in this area. And that, and that's kind of essentially what we do. So we, we create as a team monthly trainings between the two departments. And then sometimes we'll create a larger, like district or, or greater area, um, training throughout the year as well. So it's been an awesome thing for us to do. It's a, hopefully, a thing that we continue to do. And, um, if you have any questions on, on how we do that or what that looks like, I knew that, was there a question on the owl? If you see all these banners up here, that, those banners, those just represent the sixteen NAFA academies that have gone through this. This T C two, which is another style of consortium style training. Which consists of either other departments like Westminster and Adams County and Brighton, South Adams County. So the, the, that consortium style spirit of training is, bleeds out into even other aspects, training firefighters. Wh- which is NAFA and that's just simply our owl. That is our, our, our mascot. And as you know, we just, we just. Um, graduated fifty plus recruits from the north area, which was the largest academy in the history of the north area. Which is a, which is a, a huge undertaking, but shown that we can really be successful even with some really large tasks such as that, so. That's what I do and that's what Northside is. Enjoy the coins.
So what's, what's, you know, what's next with the I G A? Um, like Chief Rozier said, we have, to get to where we are today, we spent nine years from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty five. Um, to get to this point today and this I G A comes to an end here, December thirty first of this year. Uh, so the things that we're really working on and we want to continue, we want to continue this I G A with North Metro to continue this relationship. Uh, we think we've taken this to an incredible spot where it is today, um, and look forward to what the next steps look like. So we, we're working through a, a new I G A over a three-year term with some extensions as well. Um, to bring ideally, we're gonna bring them back to the, the board, Panta City Council at the end of October. For your review, that's sort of the, the timeframe we're tracking right now, or that we're still working through some of the, the details of it. What Thornton's gonna be doing in addition is the city has budgeted, uh, seventy five thousand dollars to support a feasibility study. Of what it would look like to continue the training relationship with North Metro, not just in this three-year I G A. Of what it would look like to continue the training relationship with North Metro, not just in this three-year I G A format. But what can it look like lo- in a longer term, over decades or more? And how can Thornton become a a different type of partner with North Metro in this facility? Knowing all the things that we talked about as we walked around that were built in two thousand eight, that are going to need potentially significant future investments. We talked about. Training spaces, we talked about infrastructure, facilities, restrooms, showers. And and just the use of the space and what that impact has on on these facilities as time goes by. So what we're hoping from that that feasibility study, which our intent is to work with North Metro on how we develop that feasibility study out. What questions it's gonna specifically answer, what it will um really inform for future next steps that we can utilize. And present to the this board and and our council. Um, as as what, like I said, next steps will look like. So. That's really where we're at with the I G A that's coming to the end of this year. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that you may have about that process or what our intended. Um, path forward is with continuing this relationship.
Well, it looks much like it is because now we're very good additional components here.
All right. Our intent is to continue the I G A similar to the way it is structured now. We think we've seen a lot of success with that. We're anticipating that the feasibility study may speak to other opportunities to really reframe what that relationship may look like. Um, and look at other opportunities. I believe the next slide even speaks to some of that with, are there other structures that we can look at in a feasibility study? With the the way we structure our training divisions and how we more effectively use the personnel that are assigned here um to improve prove that. So. So for the I G A, yes, intent to keep the same. I think the feasibility study and what comes after this next I G A. Uh, maybe an opportunity for us to really look at our future alternatives.
We we're thinking of a three-year process, obviously to give us some time for evaluation. We're not rushing to make a decision, but if the feasibility study leads itself into something that makes more sense from an agreement standpoint for the longer term. We'd obviously bring that forward to the council and the board for action sooner than twenty twenty eight. Uh, but we definitely want to put ourselves in a position where having to reevaluate the I G A each year as we're trying to go through a study. Just trying to be efficient about the timing, your time, process.
I have a question, Chief. Um, feasibility study, you know, sounds great. What what opportunities do you all see is, you know, is leadership here um where the COGS could. Fit better better together, more efficiencies, you know, air, just opportunities for improvement.
Yeah, I think specific to training. Um, I think there's some key opportunities in the way we structure our training division and the way we're running academies. I think we have identified some significant challenges in that very specific structure. And I think if there's ways that we can reframe expectations, reframe responsibilities. Um, formalize some positions and and what their reporting role is. I think that's a place where we can, like you said, make those COGS fit together differently. Training, I think a lot of a lot of opportunities to do similar type things.
With um, obviously, obviously haven't done the feasibility study yet. Are there any concerns or high level priorities that you guys are seeing with the facility? That might be coming up here in the near term?
Yeah, I think we're gonna speak to a handful of those. What are the key priorities for future capital investments on the next slide? Um, but we have identified some, a handful of key areas. Last class A burn building, uh, just the support facility space, fitness space. Um, also leaning into a wellness center of how we best support our personnel. From a from a physical fitness standpoint and a return to work standpoint. So when we have individuals out on O J I or an injury, how do we best rehab them to get them back uh back to work? Um, e- effectively. And we're seeing a lot of success in the Denver metro area with that model and that's something that we see that with. You know, with the investment, we could do something similar here. We have a space for the location and again, that same type of synergy.
We definitely feel that both sides, both districts have department and district have energy towards these things that we're gonna talk about in a minute, but. The idea of um how big do we build these? Do we build it just for North Metro? Or is Thornton really a part of this so that we can build it to the size that fits both of our agencies together? Um, that's really where we see the the greatest synergy here is knowing that if we were to do another another training project. We could do it to the size that makes sense for both and not just one agency. From the standpoint of the facility's status right now, um, we certainly have gone through a lot of iterations of maintenance of the facility, but from a standpoint of. Um, is it well, we're doing very well with it. We just know that we're certainly at capacity with what we're doing. We're we're excited to expand. We just want to make sure we're doing it to the size and scope of of a partnership with them.
And then just to follow up, then how much land of the fourteen acres is still accessible for future expansion? I I mean, it's hard to tell with all everything paved out there.
No, it is great. I'll I'll just throw this next line up because I have a few of the things that we'll, you know, Chief Kelly just spoke to, but Chief Randy, you may, you have a better comprehension of the.
Yeah, I don't I don't want to beat this up too much. Um, Chief Kelly spoke to it and Chief O'Leary did as well, but uh. Future capital investments that we kind of have a joint vision to of what could occur out here. One is the class A burn building. You saw me point out on a tour where our fleet storage is gonna be, there's space north of that, so this direction. Um, at least another couple acres there to accommodate some sort of class A facility. Um, Chief O'Leary mentioned that while while the natural gas crops are nice, we can turn through evolutions quickly in that. It doesn't really simulate true fire conditions in a sense of high heat, low visibility, which class A at first. Um, he also mentioned that we currently have to go offsite to a neighboring jurisdiction to be able to utilize class A burn burn drops in that capacity. And then fitness space, uh likewise, we visited the training center station where the the fitness equipment is literally in the bay. That's not ideal. Um, ideally, we'd like to, North Metro would like to have a lot of that storage space. Space back to accommodate fleet reserves, other additional units that we would have up here and also our our. Facility staff houses out of that station as well. Um, and then lastly, the wellness center that Chief Chief Kelly spoke about, um, the ability to to provide onsite between team. Um, additional shower facilities that were at low capacity here, additional toilets. Um, as well as potentially, you know, fitting some of the fitness areas within that though.
Is there another question?
No.
You know, I'll I'll highlight, I think we took a card a lot today and I I will certainly highlight. Thornton and North Metro, um, compared to when we talk about the north area, we talk about a very large footprint, I think. Many of people have heard us talk about it, the graduation recently, we covered, you know, there's population six hundred thousand people. When we talk about the north area, um, the strongest connection and the highest utilization of resources is occurring between. North Metro and Thornton, we're seeing it on a daily basis. Our crews benefit that from that from a safety standpoint every single day. So I that is an incredibly important aspect to us, make sure we're doing just that, we're providing. Cohesive collaborative training that is um preparing them for those incidents to work safely together. And the public in turn benefits from that because our personnel are doing the 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 same work aligned in their operations. And we're seeing positive outcomes in the community. And that is, that is a key piece of this relationship as they were ultimately impacting the public in the city of Thornton, city of Northland, the city and county of Broomfield. On a core Adams County has seen the benefit of that. We certainly intend to bring back some additional recommendations to this board and to our council. Uh, next year and in the following years of what that that future collaboration could look like. Happy to answer any questions you have.
So, excuse me, can may I have a go back one slide, Chief? So I just want to make sure that I understand the process that you outlined here and then I have a question, at least one question at the end of it. So the process right now is we have the I G A that's expiring in a couple months, but the humans. Just scary to think that twenty twenty five has come into an end, but claims, it's very dark. Um. And so what what is being proposed and being contemplated by Thornton City Council as well as the board? Is uh an extension of the I G A with minor modifications, it sounds like, uh commensurate with changing details, changing uses, things like that. And then during that extension time going and uh Thornton will. Uh, has will commission a study, has budgeted for, will commission the study to look at long-term feasibility, which gets back to. Um, not only the the training, but the potential capital improvements on the next step. Is that, do I have it about right?
That is correct. That is exactly right.
So so here's here's trying to understand the envelope of possibilities. I think when you answered Director Valera's question a minute ago. That was like the ultimate positive result of we extend the I G A, we go through this this process. Uh, we come up with some sort of a arrangement and we all dance happily off into the future. I hate to ask this, but I feel compelled to understand the other end of the 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 universe of possibilities. What's the worst case scenario? What what happens if we don't, for example, I'm not proposing this, I'm just asking the question. What happens if we don't renew the I G A past December thirty first? What happens if we don't have this collaborative relationship?
Yeah, I I'll I'll speak for Thornton first and I'll I'll turn it over to Tipsy to talk. Um, for Thornton, what we would lose is if we lose a. A highly effective training space um that we are relying on on a daily basis to keep our personnel highly trained. In addition, we would um, we would lose the direct relationship that we have with North Metro. Um, where we're training together, we're developing together. Uh, we are, we are training our people together. We see a high value in it. Without the use of the space, I think we would still try as as best we can to continue the relationship without the use of this space. Um, but certainly I have uh three staff that are held here when in office space. Um, that are are jointly sitting next to North Metro personnel that on a daily basis are communicating, are developing, building, training plans. Um, thinking about the future, thinking about our people, making sure we're operating effectively. From Thornton, that's what we would, we would lose that. Um, and we would, you know. I think ad admittedly, we probably struggle to find ways to continue that outside of this relationship. That's certainly. Not a not an outcome I I I want to see, but I understand it could certainly be a worst case scenario.
Well, I don't want to see it either. I just wanted to ask that question.
Yeah, I mean, I I think I would echo those same things. It's not that we would be out of the training center per se, but but being out of the partnership and the opportunity for. The synergies that we really haven't realized of seeing some sort of economy of scale with the staff and modernists. We're um looking forward at a wellness center that is staffed by physical therapists or mental health clinicians. That is then scaled back or not possible because it's just North Metro. Um, I I see those those opportunities together really benefit not only the personnel, not the city and and not the district, but the the community overall. Um, yeah, certainly, I I think that the where we have ramped up to, that would definitely be a significant impact to. Not only training, but really our ability to respond in a collaborative way.
Thank thank you. I think that's all I got for you.
I don't have a question. I just wanted to say that it's really. If it, I didn't realize the level of the partnership that was happening between the two agencies and I think it really just shows a testament to. Why people have such trust in the fire department up here because the responses, I mean, there's somebody coming, whether it's from North Metro or Thornton. Um, and so it just shows again that regionalism that is the North Metro thought process and everything we do because we have to. Um, but you know, you guys really, I would just want to say thank you because it's really very um. Comforting to know that that there is really not much of a gap. Or the responses and that somebody is coming, so thank you.
Thank you.
I'll add to it. So in twenty thirteen, when I first got on council, the council member, we didn't have this relationship in place and. In fact, Oriolson didn't arrive until after that. And I remember having the conversation about my neighborhood at the time was served by North Metro. And I didn't care who showed up to my house, if it was Thornton, North Metro, Brighton, I didn't care as long as somebody showed up, right? But then talking with Gordy about opportunities and how it would be that our firefighters didn't care if showed up because they're all the same team. That made it so much better. And so looking at what we've come from since then to where we are today, I'm really impressed with the amount of work. That both agencies have done to keep our community safe and I'm really this thoughtful process of putting through an I G A. But giving us the opportunity to expand it, to give us time to do the right thing, not just the fast thing. I think that's really helpful and very much appreciated by our entire committee.
I can't top with the mayor. You know, but I I guess the one thing that perhaps maybe a takeaway for you all in council. Uh, we all are very aware of this on the board is that and and perhaps Chief Ram. You can talk to this, but we we very much look at the response time from the call out to the time that. Assets get unseen and I I think the standard is seven minutes or less. Is that is that correct?
Yeah, we have a travel time of just over five minutes, which is common with the door.
So somebody's coming within less than ten minutes, seven minutes. And so the whole, you know, when I when I explained the residents, the whole AdCom concept, like. They call it the jump ball with basketball. It's the toys and student room. And it's it's quite impressive that um for the folks on our end. We think about that, we're so passionate about getting there really quickly. And when you. And I suppose it was the brilliance of uh. You know, the number of chiefs that were just here before, Chief Ram is included. This whole thing about setting up the AdCom jump ball concept really um was a leap forward. Massively in terms of getting quick response unseen, so. Um, I think that uh we really are beneficiaries of some very smart teams that came before and. Want to definitely continue to build off of that strong foundation, so. Um, did what you said, man, Mary, and and just really passionate from our side to make sure that we are. We are gonna continue to respond no matter where it is, whether it's in this district or whether it's in Westfield, Brighton, Belleville, wherever. Um, that we're there to answer.
I'll I'll say, you know, from Thornton, thank you for the last nine years. Um, it's big, God knows to what I what we think is a really great space and thank you for letting us share this today and talk to you all. So the unique opportunity for us to bring these two uh to your board and and our council together to to have this conversation, so very, very much appreciated.
We should probably do this once in nine years.
I'm glad I got to see it before I'm done.
Maybe we could do like a a fire damage control epic or something. No, I'm sure a lawyer is not.
I do want to just take a second to say thank you to to all the staff that helped us put this together, um, including the crews that were here earlier. Um, it's night two for them, so they've been on for twenty four hours then throughout the day. They'll go back to work tonight. Um, and all night long, so um we borrowed them during dinnertime and our engine that was up here is our busiest engine, so certainly um probably won't get you sleep, so thank you to everybody.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay, with that, I think we're ready to adjourn unless there's anything else for the good of the whole business or, you know.
Make a motion, Gregor.
Okay, second. I I have a first from uh Director Miller, second from Aaron Moss, and this is a favor of journey.
Jamie, I'll go to city attorney and this concludes uh city council's planning session for tonight. Thank you.